Yeah, piece of wood.
Piece of wood to bag up. Oh, seems like it's fine. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I apologize for being a little late. I'll try not to do it again, I promise. All right. First item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from the most recent meeting with the January 10th.
January 10th.
What did we like to?
No, excuse me, January 14th.
14th. Did anybody like to, any additions or revisions or changes to the minutes?
Where?
No discussion? Would it be acceptable to remove except the minutes?
Motion except.
Excepting?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstained? The minutes aren't accepted. Okay. Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Showtime. Who is, um... Who is Sean Bouchard? Is he one of your?
Sean Bouchard is my associate, and he's the sailing coach for Roger Williams University. So he gets to go down with the entire team for trials and competition in Florida, and I get to come before the Conservation Commission does.
Well, that would be...
But Sean has signed most of the papers and stayed in touch.
Your name is on the firm and his isn't, so.
So I'm, for the record, I'm here from the Law Office of Silver, Thomas, Motlin, and Orffenberg. Bob Silver, the senior partner. And I entered an appearance and prepared a petition before the zoning board of review asking for some technical relief from setbacks and things of that nature. And also filed a petition for a special use permit. Because a portion of the 7,000 square foot expansion of the Napa facility, which is on Valley Road, slightly, a corner of it overlaps into an area which is technically the watershed protection area. And by virtue of the fact that the addition to the building will in fact encroach by a few feet into the 200-foot setback, it's necessary to file, which I did, the petition for special use permit and come before the Conservation Commission to explain what's happened. Now, this matter goes back to 1995. That's when I appeared firstly on behalf of Peter and Susan Benson and Jack Napolitano and Kenny Quirk, the owners of that triangular piece of property where Napa is presently located. That was a vacant lot, so to speak. But Mr. and Mrs. Benson bought it and had me file petitions with the town council and also the zoning board of review. It was originally office space zoning. But to do what they wanted to do, to establish a Napa facility, we asked the council, and the council did, back then, change the zoning to limited business, traffic sensitive. And it's remained that way to date. So with the zoning being limited business, I filed a petition for variance relief because we needed to get front yard setback relief. And also, at that time, because of the provisions of the zoning ordinance relating to parking, we needed a parking variance. Since then, the parking ordinance has been changed, and we qualify and have more than adequate parking for the facility that exists and the expansion of the facility by that 7,000 square foot number. You will note on the site plan, I believe that's been provided you, that there is an existing building, the Napa facility, setback from what appears to be the front yard line, but it's not. The state of Rhode Island owns a huge portion of the property in front of the building. And the relief that I got previously was to allow the building to be right on the front yard setback, with no setback. And the relief was granted because, from the naked eye, the setback looks like it's probably 60, 80 feet or more, even though it's state property. I also got some variance relief for parking, and I think we came before this honorable committee, commission, because we wanted to build this original store, which encroached into the watershed protection district. This, uh, this board or commission granted an advisory opinion to the zoning board review saying that the design of the original building would not impact or impair the watershed protection requirements and provisions. And that favorable, favorable opinion went to the zoning board back in 1995. And as a result, the zoning board granted all the relief that was necessary to permit the construction of the building as you see it now. Over the years, yes?
The setback in front, did you move the building forward so that it would not be in the zone?
Watershed, yep.
So that's exactly what you did?
Yep. That was one of the things that we came before this commission previously and said, "We want to take the building as far away from the watershed protection district, and we're going to ask for relief from the zoning board to move it as far as we can right up to the existing front yard boundary line," which we did. And we indicated that it was necessary to get us out of the major portion of the development out of the watershed protection district. And the zoning board agreed with you that that made sense and allowed me to put this building up with zero front yard setback. The other circumstance that made it a reasonable request for the relief was that, as I said, if you go out there and you look from Valley Road, you think the building is way back from the street, and it is. Except the state owns the portion between Valley Road and the front of the building. And the state doesn't want to do anything with it. So we took advantage of the sighting to make sure that the building was as far back as possible and as far away from the watershed protection district as possible. So nothing is going to change except an unsightly situation where, over the years, because the business was in need of additional area to store inventory, that the Bensons have placed outdoor storage containers, which you'll see them when you drive by, and they're just sitting in what appears to be to the north of the existing building. The request that they're before the zoning board for, and I refer to you for advisory opinion, is they want to get rid of those outdoor containers and just put up this 7,000 square foot addition to the existing building. And in that addition, there will be storage for all parts. The retail aspect of this is a very small area of the existing building. Most of all of this is done by delivering parts to the customers all over New England. And the retail will not expand. There will be no additional traffic, for example, with the new use of inventory storage. It'll just be to accommodate the business and to allow it to remain successful going forward. I have with me Michael Russell, who is our professional engineer. Mike did all the designing, and he took care of the permitting with Riedem and also with Rideot. Because we had to deal with Rhode Island Department of Transportation and Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. Recently, and Mike will address this, we received a, um, a report from DEM that there is no significant alteration of the wetlands involved. And we've gotten that blessing. But I'd like, Mike, to address for you the plan itself, his design, and to field any technical questions that you might have in connection with this.
Actually, Mr. Silver, there's two questions I'd like to ask before we hear that. You mentioned the original petition that was put forward to the zoning board for the original construction. At that time, was there a watershed protection district issue related to that construction?
We were going to put the existing building that's there in such a location that it would encroach on the watershed protection district. Even with moving the building all the way to the front of the lot, a portion of it was still in the watershed protection district, which was in existence at that, at that time. And we had to come before this commission and also the zoning board with our expert testimony. Kamal Hingorani was the engineer back then in 1995. And Peter Merritt was the real estate expert. And they testified to the fact that there would be no adverse environmental impact as a result of a portion of the building, a small portion, being located in the watershed protection district. And there were some conditions, if memory serves me correctly, that were imposed to protect water quality in the watershed protection district. And the vote was five to zero in favor. And it indicated that the conditions, the grant of the variance was conditioned upon the following. "The detention and sedimentation collection pond shall be enclosed by a five-foot chain link fence and shall include a gate sufficient to allow access for maintenance." And that "the area to the rear of the proposed commercial building," that is to the west, namely the western portion of Lot 35, which is within the 200-foot setback required under the watershed protection district, Zone 1. "The provisions of the ordinance shall require planting and that area be planted and maintained with perennial rye grass or such other grasses as is allowed under the regulations of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management." And finally, "the detention and sedimentation collection pond shall be maintained pursuant to the standards set forth under the rules and regulations of the Department of Environmental Management." And "the design and the construction of the driveway access to the subject site would be such that it will not allow for any increase of runoff of salt and other petroleum contaminants from Valley Road onto the subject site." And those conditions, I believe, emanated from this commission in its advisory opinion. And we had no difficulty or problem incorporating them into the petition for relief and the resulting decision for variance. So I think Mike described to you that with this addition, there's just a small, little triangular piece of the addition that encroaches on the watershed protection area. But the entire issue of water pollution and whatnot was dealt with because the original design created for the first time a detention pond, which is still there. And the detention pond was put in to make sure that the runoff from the activity of the business itself would not enter Bailey Brook directly, but would have to go into the detention system and be attenuated, if you will.
Thank you. The second question I have is, were the ISO containers, which is the additional storage beyond the facility, were they addressed in the original petition also?
No, no. Mr. Kane, I believe, independently was asked whether or not outdoor storage containers could be placed on the site without further variance relief. And he came to the conclusion that it would be allowed. They've done that in compliance with the town, uh, town permission, but it's an unsightly type of addition. And it's very awkward for them to go out of the main office, go around, open up those containers and implement weather, and bring the product back into the main building. So the extension itself will allow all the activities to, uh, to be done indoors and not have to go outside and remove those existing containers.
Okay, thank you.
Question. On the site plan, on the southwest corner of the proposed addition, you've got a crosshatched rectangle there.
I'm sorry?
There's a crosshatched rectangle on the, uh...
On page three of six?
Yeah, page three.
That's a loading space provision.
Is that, is that asphalt pad or?
It's already there.
It's already there?
Right. It's, uh, what I would call a mobile loading pad. So for the record, Mike Russell, I'm a principal with LDC Engineering Consulting, offices here in Middletown on Equinacab. There was a preliminary determination application submitted to DEM back in 2010, plus or minus, for some parking and loading within the watershed protection district inside the 200-foot setback to Bailey's Brook. That, as best I could interpret, that was also a quote-unquote "mobile loading space." So in other words, what I mean by that, there's no formal loading dock into the building. It's just drop-off in a general area, box trucks and things of that nature. So as part of the site plan, development plan review process and also the special use permit process, we have to show a loading space for this type of use. That's, it's a calculated area based on the square footage of the building. So that's the applicant's preference and where to cite that. But it's on existing asphalt.
Does it encroach on the watershed protection district?
It, uh...
Runs right through the middle of it.
This is your line here.
Just looking on the existing conditions, it's not, it's not depicted.
Well, this is something new. That hatch area applies to the addition.
Well, you, I'm sorry, confused now. You said it's already there.
No, no, the pavement, the surface is paved.
It's paved.
So that, that is not, that is just a graphic symbol. This is show that that needs that area requirement for loading space, but it's within the space that already exists.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not a physical structure.
No, 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 no.
It's a concept.
Right. Yeah, this is just a graphic, you know, saying that, okay, this is, this is an area that is designated for loading. But again, it's mobile. Whether they park exactly like that or, you know, what have you, that's, that's a different story.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Because the current paved area does currently encroach slightly into the 200-foot setback.
Oh, yes.
Right, okay.
What they were here before you, 10 years ago.
Back in the day, sure.
Right, was the same thing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand what's depicted on the site conditions.
This will help us, those small plants.
That's why I got my phone. I'm not looking at my phone. I'm using it as my magnifying glass.
There you go.
This is the large plant, and this is the hatch area.
Right.
And this dotted line, as I understand it, is a 200-foot setback. So you can see that westerly portion of that area falls into the watershed protection district. But it's already there, and they dealt with the DEM on it.
And this dark line is the boundary of the current parking area.
Is this, if this is what was permitted with this commission 10 years ago?
The gravel area as well?
This area, parking and loading. This is just a graphic symbol. It's just, for the purpose of this plant, it's not a physical structure.
The paved area indicated somehow.
Yes, it is. Yep, there you can see the outline up here. Well, this is actually right, but everything inside the...
Right, it's this line right here.
Right.
That serves to here. And so this, that's what I was saying. So a little bit of the current pavement falls within the 200-foot setback.
On this side of the line, that's within the 200.
So it's not going to increase the impervious area at all?
Nope, it's already utilized. And it's just, Mr. Kane always requests for a designated loading space, but this is not something new. It's already, it kind of aligns with the existing pavement.
Is there a loading dock for the building? Is there a loading dock for the new addition that the truck should back up into?
There's no, there's no dock.
There's no dock. It's, it's all rock, dollies.
Okay.
So there's no dock. The only expansion of what's there is this 70.
70 or 70.
70. That's new. And you can see on the dotted line, just this little corner, this triangular piece, goes into the watershed protection. That's why you're here. Because we're approaching it into the watershed protection district. But all the runoff is otherwise contained in the existing drainage system, which is where, down here, okay? Everything you would work down here, and that already exists to ensure that it's all free-flowing surface water into the watershed protection district. All controlled previously in here. And everything from this addition will continue to go into that site.
That's correct. So essentially, it's a, it's a net wash. What's, within this building footprint right now is impervious area where the containers are. It's still around. Explain now, replace that ground surface with asphalt with a roof surface. Roof is cleaner runoff than the asphalt. The containers are gone. And this is all hard piped into that detention system.
We're capturing rainfall before it gets to the ground, what it is in detention.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like about 80% or so of the proposed building footprint is all the asphalt, is the problem?
Yes. No, no, that's, that's not 20%. That's probably about 10%.
Where is the door? Is there an access to that other than inside the store?
Right, so they're going to have emergency, the, the addition's going to join the existing building. All the utilities and primary access, which is through the existing building, these will be emergency progress on two sides of the building.
But the loading gates, they're, will they load them from there?
Same way they do in that.
Same way they do in that. Stop there, and they'll go in.
That's what, and that's what I mean by mobile. This could, they might park that truck over here, and like park in a parking space, you know? So it's just, it's just a, a graphic provision to satisfy the zoning board's requests.
Is there any water facilities in there? Any bathrooms or wash stations, or anything like that in there?
No.
So I understand there'll be no longer?
It's just, uh, storage.
So deliveries will be in the existing parking lot, parking area, and they'll carry it through the door that the customers go in.
Business as usual. There's nothing different. There will be nothing different about how the product is delivered and stored in the building.
Just for your asking, why didn't you adopt a proposed loading space?
In a parking space? The size of it, you know, the interfer- all of this, these parking spaces conform zoning side dimensionals. And then the aisle widths for two-way traffic conform to the required dimensions. So all of this, which is quite larger than any conventional parking space, would just require a redesign of the, of the, of the area, so.
Now, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a door on the west side of the building here. Is that where the stock is going to go in?
Where is the door?
It's on right here. Existing door.
That exists, yeah.
Right.
So they might bring it in through there.
Okay.
I think they have a lot of options, yeah.
In fact, currently, you can notice on the north side of the building, they have an existing loading door and existing door.
Which they have closed off.
And I'm sure right now, that's where product is purchased, is brought in. Because they're not depicting a loading door anywhere on the two sides of the usable building. So I think what, in effect, I imagine they're giving up access to this loading door. And everything arguably, it can't be brought into the small doors. They have to go up to the front door. Because they're not showing any loading doors whatsoever on that west side of the current structure. And there's no room, and it's not depicted on the other two sides of the proposed.
And they don't want to have, we're trying to remove all the pavement that, it's the existing pavement that's outside of that footprint and replace it with, with reach base.
Can I ask a quick question about this existing gravel area? Now, I'm assuming it is actually existing. Is that just depicted as existing, or it's actually there?
It's there. And it's pitched back towards the parking and driveway area. And I think that was one of their conditions back 10 years ago when they were before you, is that they didn't want the runoff building towards Bailey's Brook. They wanted it contained, well, they wanted it directed through the pavement into that provision, which is for stores and freezers.
So is the purpose of that existing gravel area arguably just so trucks can maneuver?
Yes.
In and out of that loading area, I would imagine? But there's no permanent or provisions for allowing any permanent storage of anything in that gravel area? Because I'm assuming it's gravel, so it's got to be a pervious surface.
It's pervious surface.
So if a truck's parked there, I'm not sure how Napa takes their recyclable oils and all the horrible things that we all worry about in the existing watershed area. But if you're going to park a tractor-trailer there overnight while it's waiting to be offloaded or unloaded, and are there any, are you aware of any actual written provisions that prohibit the use of that 4A in those areas?
You hit the nail on the head when you suggested that this area is used for turnaround.
It seems like.
Because it doesn't make any sense to park here and then have to lug everything that distance. They do all the activities closest they can to the building.
But it seems now that because this door is no longer going to be a loading door, and the only, again, unless there's something else, the existing door here and then the front door, those are the only two ways you're going to get, because this goes right up, you know, here's the parking pay area, it goes to here, it ends when it runs into this building. So unless down the road, they're going to try to throw a loading door here on the proposed building, I, I don't, I don't know what purpose this is going to serve other than for vehicles to turn around once they load, I guess?
That, I think, is the only useful part of this. They, we're very, really like the way you're going to be parked. It's not a big thing.
No, like, when I go there, I just zip right in the morning, you know? It's very rare to do anything other than park right in front.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that would be my concern, is that existing gravel area that's there and apparently went through the process, approval process before. As, you know, it's already there, it's already approved, I guess. So impervious, you know, pervious surface well inside. 200-foot, but if it's pitched properly and was approved previously, I don't know what recourse we have to put additional stipulations or anything on that. I just, 10 years later, I don't know if it's, it's even worth discussing.
Well, the, the only reason we're here is not because it's going to be anything changed as to how you get in and get out and get the product in and out. It's that we're storing here.
Right.
Right. Well, I think there's a big, I would say there's a big change how stuff's going to come in and out of this building. Because it was this way, and that door is no longer going to be used. Everything's coming through the front door here. That's the only decision, bring stuff in through the front door every time something comes in, unless there's another way of doing so that, that isn't depicted on here. Everything's coming through the front door. Pallet isn't getting through the side.
I think maybe this existing door will be the way in which the product will go in in the absence of rear doors.
Right. I mean, I would have expected the applicant to throw a loading door on here or expand this. Because you're not getting a four-foot pallet through a 30-some inch door. That's besides our discussion.
There was an iteration where they were going to put an actual loading dock.
Right.
And they scrapped that concept.
Yeah.
They just wanted, they wanted to haul it in the building. And that was their choice. But the first pass of this was a, was a formal loading.
I would think so. And then I can see the existing gravel area being of, of, of very high use. But now, to bring anything through the front door, if the proposed loading area is just there and need a check on the box, it doesn't really even serve much of a purpose. And I don't see a, a, a big vehicle going all the way back there, turning around in the gravel area, just to dump stuff off to have them bring it back in through the front door. So I, I don't, I don't really have a, a big concern with that gravel area being there, or that loading area being there.
No. And I understand the rationale for putting it there because Jack wants it.
Yeah.
Jack wanted to identify.
Designated area, so.
Yeah, designated area. But the truth is, you know, that's probably not gonna be used as a loading area, because like you said, like, pull it, truck, it'll be trucked all the way up to bring it out.
Yeah, and let's do the door that we're not depicting there, is why we're calling it a whole, whole location, not a designated, not, not, not associated with a, a traditional loading dock.
I think the, the fourth concept that I believe is, is very, very little that's gonna happen differently that hasn't been going on in the past.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Especially from surface water runoff, collection and retention, which is a whole lot of your considerations. We're not adding anything to the watershed protection area. As a matter of fact, what we're doing is we're collecting all the roof water on the new addition, capturing it, making sure that it doesn't run off in this direction and put it in the retention pot. So, not being a scientist myself, but I would think as a layperson, I think that means that there's gonna be less potential for adverse impact for the water quality and the watershed protection. Because you're capturing it and putting it in the detention pot, where it has now to cleanse itself of percolation before being allowed to go through here.
What kind of system does it use when the after comes down from the roof? Is this some kind of filtration before it goes into retention pot or what?
I apologize.
Just straight into retention pot?
It's not required to, state's own management policy requires entry proof on the surface of that surface runoff. So, this case, as Bob said, you're getting a better quality of runoff in that footprint that was there now. Matter of fact, not all of that flows to that detention basin now, and somehow it goes off into the water area. So, a hundred percent of that.
My next question is going to be what happens to that water now?
Just goes into the watershed protection area. You can see the.
Yeah, it runs down through the grass, right? There's that basic, basic slope.
You see the, the directions, it was aligned, the slopes.
So, so.
It's thirty-nine here, and fifty-nine, sixteen, sixty-three, all the way up to here. It just slopes to the west.
So this, so a hundred percent of this one, this addition is collected in a gutter system, hard piped, where it will be in detention. So it's.
Now, have, have you done calculations to confirm that that?
It's part of this latest preliminary determination application. The storm, in stormwater.
You did give us a copy of that.
Stormwater management is required. Now, this, they have to assess it, but this is less than ten thousand square feet, so the standards are minimally applied, because the, the big reason here is, I don't think the threshold of ten thousand square feet is that it's an exchange impervious to impervious, and the quality of the superficiance is better than what's there. And they, they issued an insignificant also for that application, insignificant alteration to this.
Are there, are there designated wetlands where you're building this thing?
I, we're way outside of the.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Research area.
Have they identified the kinds of products that's gonna be stored in that facility? I guess what, what my guess.
Whatever they've been using over the years, you know?
Is there gonna be stored oil or liquid type products?
Well, not stored now, but what's gonna be in this building presumed was in those ponds.
On the trailer.
Yeah, in the back. And I didn't see any liquids that were in those. I went by this afternoon just to look at.
You looked inside, you could see in a hole.
They don't.
They were all, the doors were open.
The, there is no activity such as changing oil or holding up the containers, this is delivery, retail delivery to sites. So everything is sealed.
Right.
What this will do is get rid of those sort of ugly mobile pods.
Like, cut down on the runoff.
It definitely sounds like an improvement.
Certainly an improvement for the business. They don't have to go outside in the snow and rain to get whatever part they need. And whatever weather damage will be done to their inventory is gonna be less, given this structure.
Are there gonna be any floor drains in the, the new area at all?
I understand there is plumbing.
There's no bathroom, there's a pool, a cure in the torso.
So if a case of break, floor breaks open.
And slaves inside.
It's gonna stay inside.
Is there any kind of fire protection system that's gonna be put in there?
Add it all.
It's my understanding, I, I, this week we are affected, they're not, they're not sprung, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, I put them off, especially because I.
If the building code or the state fire code says spring, it's not spring.
Yeah, that's really.
And Jack Kane is the guy that go see that.
Well, I don't see any issues with this.
Question, pass. If you go to the last page, page five or six, sorry, second last page, that page, the erosion control thing?
Nine of six.
Five of six. Second last page.
Five of six. I like the big plants for my eyes.
This is where the phone comes in handy. This and restaurants, that's handy.
Nine of six.
So if I could just really quickly, so I just want to make sure, on the backside or the north side of this building, the proposed temporary stockpile area and the proposed temporary staging containment areas, they're obviously strategically located outside of the two hundred foot setback. You've got proposed straw wattle erosion control fencing around it, I'm assuming. So whatever is being stockpiled here, with your little tubes of hay, will hopefully keep whatever wood or wouldn't stay in that area. What are those designated for? Is that during construction? Is this a stockpile area?
During construction. So staging and containment, you, again, these are mobile spaces, but the, like, the permit will obviously be written, is they have to be outside the, the two hundred foot river run. So, the stockpile is typically the spoil, or this is gonna be slab grade construction. So it's just gonna be a continuation of the existing building, same elevations will match.
Gonna be the same color?
Same, like, it's a nice sense, it's the same material, where it'll look exactly the same. So same height, same material.
Yellow and blue.
Yeah.
It is what it is. It's a metal building, and I think you create more concern putting something up that didn't look like the original than not.
So those, these two temporary areas are temporary, they go away?
They go away. So, so what happens when, when the building's up, you get to a certain stage where that can be removed? Everything, all of the construction access is inside the controlled perimeter, the erosion control perimeter, will be disclosed of off-site, removed off-site, and as part of the permission plan, this area, if there's any asphalt outside of this footprint, it gets replaced with grayish lawn. One of the, one of the other things to point out, not that this is a concern, this is, you can see further outside of the jurisdiction, is in order to construct these, we had probably got some screen, evergreen screen right in front of the containers when we did the site.
Yes, yeah.
That has to get displaced during construction. It's, it's the big thing, the DOT is part of that permit, its own property, they want it replaced in time. So they're gonna put it back at screen once construction's complete.
And this shed is there now, apparently?
It's gone.
So it wasn't there.
It's actually, it's after the survey, after the plans were graded, they were moved, my understanding.
There's still a shed there.
You sure?
Yeah, it was, we found that this afternoon. There's a blue shed.
Yeah, the yellow shed is still there.
Where, where, where are you looking at?
This is.
Yeah, 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 right there, yeah.
My understanding.
Yeah, no, that's, that's there, was there this afternoon?
So then, so once they're done with this, on, again, on page five or six, this area here is depicted through a wattle fence or whatever, this proposed straw wattle.
Yeah.
So, is this gonna be, like you said, all basically lawn or green area when it's all set and done? And then, this proposed silt sack insert, so the down space, is this what, is it depicted here? All the water coming off the roof of this is gonna go into its own dedicated?
Line.
This doesn't exist now, correct?
It's not.
It's gonna go to this proposed silt sack insert with somewhere, I think the other one talked about, oil, water separated, yada, 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 all that kind of stuff. And then from there into the storage area, the, the rainwater, yeah, detention area.
And the activity you see within the hay bale area and does approach the two hundred foot setback, this was presented to DEM, and DEM allowed the work to be done with the conditions that might describe cleaning it all up and it's finished.
Right.
And they, that was part of a letter indicating it's an insignificant alteration of the area.
It's during, during the construction activity, the, the activities are, are outside of the riverfront zone. And then there are conditions in that permit, in that essential containment requirement, that the area be restored per the design plans and in the space that's going to reach base, stabilize range base.
So you have DEM approval, those caveats?
And DOT approval.
What does DOT have to, that's the setback?
Right. It, that permit was required really for what they call achieving, it's not in the zoning sense, but it's redeveloping property. So there's no new curb cuts, there's no.
Physical alteration.
There's no alteration to the right-of-way, there's no drainage impacts to the safe right-of-way. It's just the fact that they're re, quote-unquote, redeveloping property, necessitates a physical alteration from it. That's how they get their.
Get their money.
That's exactly right. So.
So right now, there's, with this being the new roof runoff conduit, is there anything right now for the existing roof or any sort of parking lot drainage, or is everything just kinda sloped toward this right now? So there's no below grade drainage in any way. Comes off the building, the concrete, suspended out in the parking lot. So everything on the roof and everything in the parking lot currently eventually makes its way down through here into the initial pond and then into this, the retention area, correct?
One thing, one important thing to note, in addition to where this is built, you know, it's hard piped in the basin, is all of the restored area, the green space area, will be graded in a manner that it will, the flow line is across the site this way, not where it currently goes that way. So we're intercepting that and making sure we're directing it to that basin, that surface.
I don't have copies of it, but it's an expensive document. This is the insignificant alteration to the permit, dated February twenty eighth, and it has a ton of conditions, as temporary erosion, sediment control, described stabilization of the strip soil, stability of mitigative features, facilities and system treatment and control, shall install according to this. And it goes on and on and on to the point where the permit does not remove your obligation to obtain any local, state or federal approvals, permits required by ordinance of law, and it doesn't relieve you from any duties over to adjacent land or as the specific reference, when it changes drainage. That's why we're going through the design development phase, which hasn't started yet, we're gonna go through this technical review committee at the planning board. But the first stop to meet these requirements of all the state, local requirements, we're here conservation.
That's a, that's a very stock decision. There's no special conditions in that. Matter of fact, that was very similar to the one in two thousand. It's just an ordinary decision for what you look for in that, perceived, and it's any special conditions were the concerns, and they had no concerns here for this application, as they did not in two thousand. Other than, you know, to meet the standard.
Okay, now, when I went down there this afternoon, out of this field here, there's a manhole. Do you know what that's for?
Yes. Interesting you say that. So in the detention basin, I don't know if anybody, yeah, if everybody's aware of the sewer, municipal sewer that runs over, municipal sewer system, runs right under this detention basin.
That's, this, yeah.
No, it's not there.
You, we, nobody, nobody knows.
Right, right there, yeah.
It's a street line at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the basin got built on top of it, I don't, I'm not sure that's the sequence of how it happened, but we are, that's what it is, it was a town sewer system.
So that sewer comes this way?
Comes from east to west, west to east.
It flows that way. But, but it's right here, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I first looked at that, but it was some.
Was that, oh, was that manhole down here?
Storm drain, but it says sewer.
Yeah, manhole was right there. Oh, okay. I, I thought it was out this way. Okay, all right.
You were, you were the one.
Yeah, no, I was, okay, oh, yeah, that's right. I was down here. Yeah, okay, sure, that's right. Yeah, that's right, correct. Yeah, okay, that was it, right there, yeah.
So, so obviously, we're, we're thankful that the, the basin combination, well, it didn't have to disturb that area, and leave it alone. So that, that's what that is, is a town sewer.
And the size of the basin now is qualified or acceptable for the additional runoff that's gonna come from?
Well, it's, it's impervious now. And like I said, it's a swap, it's basically a roof or pavement.
Yeah, but it's not going there now.
That gets up my point, is that we're adding water now, all this, all the roof area, the five thousand square feet of roof areas, now I'm gonna go into the retention area.
We had to submit calculations to the.
And, and they said the third retention area is.
My new room is there.
Do we have any questions?
So I, I don't have any other, has to move your women.
Company's related to women? That'll be easy, okay.
And like I say, after this, I'm gonna go through a whole development plan review, technical review committee, which consists of zoning officer, Jack Kane, town engineer, Warren Moore, director of public works, Tommy Lottman, the planner, run the landscape, and they bring in fire and police as need be to review the plan. You've already met with the fire department.
So all the officials of the, remember, in a preliminary fashion, now we're not collecting any technical review committee, you know, just.
If anyone wants to sit in on that, let me know, I'll find out whether.
We're in the processes frame of the term, it.
Sure.
I have another matter, subdivision plan, that needs a technical review process, and Ryan sends off this situation, we check out when you're available or not. And I told him, I'm, I'm out of here from March nineteenth to March twenty-five, I'm gonna go see my, my baby daughter, who's now good to my age, and getting engaged in California, so all of those instances.
Congratulations.
And I don't think it will happen until I, I know it's not gonna happen until I get back, which is probably sometime around the twenty-sixth of March through the second April. And hopefully it will happen before the second of April, because that's from the planning board.
Anybody else have any questions, any concern?
Yep.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept or reject this?
So moved, I, my move that we accept is proposed.
Approved. Personally, I don't see any issues here.
Looks like an improvement to me, to, sorry.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The eyes have. When, when are you going for the standing ward?
Probably after, after your time is done. Probably after, after the conference, March or the second through the eighth.
Okay. I'll, I'll make sure I get a letter from Jack before that.
And it's gonna be a TRC meeting, I assume, and I'm also assuming that the results of the TRC meeting will be sent to the planning board. The planning board needs on the second Tuesday, I don't know what that date is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Your business?
Um, nope, there being no further business before this board, I will entertain a meeting to adjourn.
I'm happy you stopped the line.
All in favor?
I, I.
Opposed? Didn't think so.
Now.
Give me a text, my ballot.
Meeting is adjourned.
For your record.